Well, we do any announcements, right? I believe you're going to tell your people who is the answer. I made it from over there. If anyone has any comments, there's a sign up at the outside door. So if you haven't signed up already, please feel free to go inside.
Good evening, everybody. Let's call to order this public hearing of the Newton School Committee on November 6, 2025. Before we start with the public comment portion this evening, I'd like to just give a little framing to why we're here and what we're discussing. The Long Range Planning Group, which consists of from the school committee, Tamika Olshewski, Emily Prender and myself, and from the administration, Dr. Nolan, Stephanie Gilman, who's our Director of Planning, and Liam Hurley, who's our COO/ CFO, have made a recommendation to the school committee to authorize the administration to, one, submit statements of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for both Ward and Underwood schools. And, two, as part of that application process and a required part of that application process, indicate a willingness to consider consolidation as part of that application. If the school committee takes up these recommendations in December, the administration will do the work and the actual submissions to the MSBA would have to be approved by each of the school committee, the city council, and the mayor in the spring of 2026. To be clear what this is not, it is not a decision to close or consolidate any school. It is not a recommendation to close or consolidate any school. And it is not a foregone conclusion or decided policy. This process will take years and any decision that comes this December is binding on no one. So why we are here for this public hearing today, when the Long Range Planning Group presented its recommendation to the school committee in October, and upon deciding that recommendation, we sent notices to both school communities. We scheduled two community information sessions, which were held over the last two weeks. We scheduled this public hearing to ensure that anyone who wanted to have their voice heard on this matter could do so. And we have the item on agendas for two upcoming school committee meetings before the end of the year. And so what happens next is depending on the outcome of the school committee's decision in December, as I said, the administration will or will not move forward with preparing the statements of interest for the MSBA. If the SOIs are prepared, then, as I said, the incoming school committee, city council, and mayor will all have to approve that submission for it to occur in the spring of 2026. So with that, we'll open up the public comment portion. And we have so far eight or so folks in the room and one person online. If you are online and would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand and Dr. Nolan here will see you and you will be recognized. Upon being recognized, if you're in the room, I ask you come up to the podium to speak into the microphone. You will have three minutes to make a public comment at two and a half minutes. Emily Prender will give you the 30 second warning. And if you could please start your public comment by just stating your name and address. So with that, we will start in the room before we go to some of our folks online. The first two who have signed up are David Benjamin and Yale Benjamin.
Good evening. Evening, whoops. I've never used one of these before. This is new to me, teaching my kids a little bit about democracy. David Benjamin, 10 Irving Street. I know that there's a lot to say about demographics and a lot to say about finances. I don't know anything about that. I know a lot about walking. And I'm also qualified because I have three kids who have gone through Ward. My third grader and fifth grader are right there. And a ninth grade Ward graduate is back at home doing teenager things. We have walked to Ward or biked basically every day in this family for the last almost 10 years. In zero degree weather and blizzards, no amount of rain has ever stopped us. It is that priceless to us to be able to walk to our neighborhood school. I think everyone understands that it's great to start the day with exercise. That's fairly obvious. I hope it is. Forgive me if it's not. It's, but it's also priceless having the feeling that my kids have some amount of agency in their lives and that I'm not just a chauffeur, that my job is to be their dad and not to be their driver. The fact that they can walk to school and come back on their own if they want, and if they want to come with me, I'm flattered, that's great, means quite a lot. It's just, I feel like, I mean, I'm exaggerating here, but in some sense, in the 21st century, we created this dystopia where children always have to rely on parents for everything and we manage everything. And just being able to be organic and walk to their school is very meaningful. Another thing I'll say that some people might not think about is that I'm fairly socially impaired. Those two aren't, they're great, they make friends easily. Not me and our ninth grader takes after me. If it were not for walking to school and just being in the physical proximity of other parents walking their kids to school, being at pickup drop up, I would know hardly anyone. I know Bob right there because we both walk places. There's no way I would if we were driving. So I understand that the kids would probably be more enriched with a bigger consolidated school. They would probably have more opportunities for chess clubs and things like that. Thank you. There would be other efficiencies and those would be great, but they would not be worth losing the ability to go to school under our own power. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in the room will be Yale Benjamin. And then that will be followed by Elizabeth Gannon.
Hello. My name is Yale Benjamin. I live on 10 Irving Street. Ignore the height. As you may have guessed, I do share a lot of the same opinions with my father over there. But I do have some opinions of my own that were not mentioned in his little presentation. One being, people, especially at Ward, do not need that many extracurriculars. At least half my class have one to two extracurriculars every day. And some chess club is going to just be actually a bit of a nuisance over RSM, swimming, tennis, and everything else. And also, a lot of Newton is like very smart. Everyone has a PhD, JD, MD, maybe add in another two master's degrees. If the parent really wants their kid to have enrichment, then why don't they just teach themselves? Themselves, they're plenty smart. I mean, everyone here probably has an IQ of like 200. Anyway, I really do not think that we need that many extracurriculars. And also, kids do need to learn a bit of independence. They can't just be taught that all their boredom is solved by some gardening club. They need to learn to entertain themselves, read a book, and do what they did in like the 30s and play outside with their friends. I mean, those kids would just say, Ma, I'm home. I'm gonna go play with my friends out in the street and then get back for dinner. They turned out just fine. I mean, look at us now, we got AI and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would like to come home with me after the meeting to talk to my kids, that would be appreciated. Okay, so we have four folks online. Let's go to in the room, Elizabeth Gannon, and then we'll move online, starting with Chris Muller.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. Nice work. I just want to thank everyone for your service and for being here and for listening to the input of the community. Some of you here are already strong champions of the cause of keeping our neighborhood schools. And I hope that some of you will become strong allies as you hear the feedback of the residents. By the way, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Gagnon and I live at 26 Maple Ave. I'm here because both of my children went to Underwood, then to Bigelow, and then to Newton North. Our experience of Citizens of Newton was greatly shaped by being part of the Underwood School Community. And I'm saddened to think that future generations might not have the same opportunity. Don't like speaking in public. So I wanted to share that I learned a lot about community from my last home, which was in East Boston. The community of East Boston lost a beautiful waterfront park called Wood Island that was designed by Frederick Law Olmsted. The park was demolished in order to allow for the expansion of Logan Airport. Because of activism in the community, leaders in the state and local level began to understand that the residents of East Boston had paid a steep price and that their sacrifice benefited other areas of the city and beyond. Without going into more detail, the leaders there said no to other types of development that would negatively impact the neighborhood. Also, they rededicated themselves to creating parks for the community to support the health and well-being and the cohesiveness of the community. In fact, the East Boston Greenway was designed by Frederick Law Olmsted's granddaughter. Here in Newton Corner, one of our main concerns is that our community has already been deeply impacted by the location of the Mass Pike Traffic Circle. As Robin Boger has eloquently shared, our neighborhood is physically divided and we do not have the gathering spaces that many other villages have. Because of the burden we have already shouldered, our neighborhood school deserves special consideration. All of Newton and additionally neighboring communities benefit from us having the traffic circle in our neighborhood. When it comes to ask voters from other parts of Newton to support the development of our new school, we need allies. We need people who champion the narrative that Newton Corner has done a great service for the city of Newton and that preserving our neighborhood school is an appropriate thing for the city of Newton to do for us. Lastly, I often thought about the library that used to be located next to Farlow Park. When they closed that neighborhood library, people from Newton Corner had to start to drive in order to use the library. My children have never independently used the library. And even though I use it all the time, I've never run into a neighbor there. I've never had a casual conversation. It's just too far from my house. Proximity matters, please fight for us. Thank you. Would that my timer?
Yes, that was your timer. Let's move to online. Our next speaker will be Chris Muller, followed by Jen Murphy.
Hi, sorry, I still have my work background. But representing Newton Corner and Chris Muller from 34 Eldridge Street, we're the big blue house right on the corner of Eldridge and Vernon, right by Cross Kitty Corner from Underwood. I've emailed a few of you in the past. Our family moved to Newton Corner two years ago and we loved that Underwood would be a village school for our two young children. We moved from a rural place before where it would never be possible to walk to school. We moved here because of Newton's incredible public school system and because we could walk our daughter and son to school. That was one of the most attractive parts of moving to Boston for us and the Boston area. And I see some of our neighbors in the room, Robin, I see you, and it's been so great to meet you and meet other parts of our community in both the Underwood Playground and Farlow Park as a whole. I'd ask that the committee, before serious exploration of consolidation continues, understood we need to check that box to just have the recognition. I think we should consider the unique value of village school to the community that surrounds it and how the school itself creates community. Underwood is a thriving, walkable school with a great playground and a great park. It operates at a viable scale while staying deeply connected to its families. Nearly all of our friends in Newton Corner, we've met on the playground. We don't even have kids who go to Underwood yet, but we've already talked to kids with toddlers who are our daughters and son age and talked about how they'd be in the same class and how excited we'd be. While the building is old, Underwood is already listed as the next priority, hopefully for facilities renewal. Rather than consolidating, investing in this village school, both Underwood and Ward should preserve a high performing program, maintain enrollment. I think it's all the numbers we want to see within Newton's schools. And I appreciate the ability to voice my opinion in a public forum. But in the outreach to the school community, there has been a missed opportunity to reach out to the broader village of Newton Corner. Whether it's existing families, soon to be Underwood students, or former parents and students, Underwood kind of links us all together as the one last community hub we have. So just lastly, I'd say we need to protect Underwood as more than just a school, but also as a place that represents one of the last village centers for our Newton Corner. And broadly, for both current and former students, as a place where they can walk to school and enjoy all the benefits that other parts of Newton have. That's all I had to add, but I think we should explore both for Underwood and Ward, a non-consolidation option.
Okay, thank you. Next online is Jen Murphy. And then we'll come back into the room with Tim Churchill.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Murphy. I'm at 112 Grassmere. I want to say I can, you guys are very tiny on my screen, but I can see two of my wonderful Ward counselors, Ward One counselors that are always there for us in our community. Thank you for, glad you're still with us, glad you won. And thank you for always being there for us. I'm here as a Underwood parent alum. I'm speaking off the cuff and I don't love public speaking, so forgive me if I ramble a little. I had three, all my three girls went through Underwood. I was heavily involved in the PTO. I helped, I was on the playground committee to get our new playground. And more importantly, Underwood was the place where I, that playground at Underwood, I spent all my days, it felt like, for many years. It was a warm, inviting community space. It's where I met like a lot of the other speakers. It's where I met a lot of my friends and my kids. Just really flourished there and spent, you know, every possible day outside on the playground after school. And so I'm just here to support the families that are there now, that are gonna come through in the future. And all of the residents of Newton Corner who are part, are end of Newton Corner, who use that playground and that school as a public space, as a place where we connect and get together. And I think, I know that there are a lot of priorities that you have to balance and that's fair. And I know it's gonna be a thoughtful process. I just hope that you don't undervalue the importance of community and the importance of walkable schools. We walked almost every day and the kids eventually walked on their own. And that's really, it's very invaluable, as another, a previous presenter said, or several presenters said. And we just hope that you will hear our voices and consider our concerns as you go through the process. And we appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back into the room with Tim Churchill, followed by Donna Marone.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Tim Churchill, I live at 34 Sherbrooke Road. I'm the father of a Ward first grader with another daughter. We started kindergarten next year. And like many, we chose to move here because we could walk to a great school. And so we're deeply invested in that continuing. I echo the comments that were made earlier about the highlight of my week are the days where I can walk my kids to school. And I share the sentiment that we didn't feel like we fit in. We didn't feel like we had a community in Newton until we started in the school and became part of the school community. I see and I recognize the need for renovation. I also see the challenges around enrollment. I think, I think most of us, I think a lot of us would agree that if it weren't for these enrollment challenges, it seems like we wouldn't be having this conversation. There would just be a discussion about rebuilding. And so I think because of that, I would, I would want to highlight the self-reinforcing nature of this, where I think the uncertainty around this, I think creates, creates a disincentive for people to enroll. And I would, I would urge as part of these discussions and this thought process, the idea of let's, rather than focus on necessarily on the problem, let's focus on a solution, let's think about, how can we, are there ways? Can we, to boost enrollment, to create the certainty that will allow people to feel convinced that this is gonna be their neighborhood school? Can we find ways to boost enrollment on the margin? Can we, can we find ways to really invest in and make these the schools that they have been and that I know they can, and I know that they can be? Lastly, I'll say, you know, I think it's also, I think in many aspects of life, I know I've seen when we open doors, even when we're saying it's not our preferred outcome, when we open certain doors, it can be, we can find ourselves looking backwards and finding it hard to close them. And so I would And so I would, I think we should, and I would urge the school committee to lead with what we think the best option is. Lead with, lead with the goal that we want, which is really maintaining and reinforcing and investing in these two great schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next in the room will be Donna Marrone, and then we will go online to C.L. Gibson and Rachel, uh, Zhang. And there is one person online who does not have a name. Uh, it just says iPhone guest with their hand up. If you could please, uh, put in a name, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry I have laryngitis, so I hope this comes through okay. Uh, my name is Donna Marrone. I'm the Director of the Ward After School Program. I live at one forty-four Corey Street in Boston. Um, I've been at the Ward After School Program for thirty-five very, very joyful years. And ever since two thousand nineteen, when this was first announced about the future of Ward and Underwood being in question, I've been living with a knot in my stomach. Because I love the Ward community, the Ward families, and I love our school. It's a top ten school in Massachusetts, not by any fluke or any mistake. We have an exceptional principal. She has such great vision, and her staff truly care and know each child. And may I dare say, that Ward School also is tops due to the after-school program. Uh, we serve over fifty percent of our school. For those tuning in who might not be aware, the after-school programs in Newton were individually founded by parents approximately fifty years ago and are still run by the parents today. We are independent from NPS, and we have nonprofit status. It gives us a unique opportunity to have our own budget and our own staff, and we're allowed to run a program that is suitable to the kids' interests and curiosities. It's the perfect blend of education and recreation. We offer drama productions, sports, STEM projects, art lessons, community service, and most importantly, a chance for kids to just be unplugged and enjoy a good old-fashioned playtime, something today's kids desperately need. Um, now I know the after-school programs are the last things on your mind um, when talking about the future of Ward and Underwood, but just want you to know by checking the box, you do force us to also have to plan for closing or merging. It leaves us with a lot of uncertainty. So I'm only here representing Ward After School, but I think I can safely say that two successful nonprofit, community-born-and-bred programs will be deeply impacted by the closure or merger of these two wonderful schools. So again, I know you have bigger fish to fry, but I just wanted to go on the record and ask you to acknowledge the ripple effect of your next steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Our, yes, next speaker online will be C.L. Gibson, followed by Rachel, uh, Zhang. And then we'll come back in the room to Alex Slater.
Is it, is it working now? Okay, uh, my name is Christy Gibson, and I live at eighty-seven Washington Street. I would like to second all of the previous statements regarding walkable schools and childhood independence and the sense of community that, um, that brings. It's certainly something that our family moved here for and that we found in the Underwood community. And so thank you to everyone for, for speaking up and sharing that. Um, additionally, as the school committee has acknowledged, much of this process will be under the control of the mayor and the city council, along with the new school committee. Um, but one of the aspects that has been troubling for me is that, is the aspect of transparency to it. Um, because although this hearing and checking the box on the MSBA application is not, uh, as Chris said, a um, necessarily a recommendation for uh, consolidating or closing any schools, the long-range facilities planning timeline does seem to include such a recommendation, um, given that um, the, the Ward students are slated to be in swing space in twenty thirty-one to thirty-three and not the Underwood students. And um, that does seem to signal that this is something that the district is planning for and that the city is planning for. Um, and what uh, many of us, uh, at least uh, in the Underwood community that I've talked to would like to see is truly um, uh, what the school committee has, has uh, shared is the goal of the feasibility study, which is to look at all possibilities, um, and uh, would like to see that include um, all of the possible spaces in the city that, that, that either consolidated or individual schools could be at, um, uh, including the Burr Park site, um, which could be either a consolidated school site or a new Underwood site. And uh, that, that could be a great place um, for a walkable school building for many of the families who go to both Underwood and Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Rachel Zhang online, and then Alex Slater, uh, present in the room.
Uh, hello, I am Rachel Jong at twenty Oakland Street, and this is Arite. Um, I'm an Underwood kid. Yeah, she's an Underwood kid. She's in kindergarten. I also have a second grader. Um, and so we moved to Newton in the summer of twenty twenty-four um, and kind of blind because we didn't know anything about Massachusetts, um, in a way. And so, uh, we were, we talked, talked to people and, and asked around and, and heard that Newton had a good school system, so we came here. And we rented at first, um, because we, you know, didn't want to commit ourselves. Um, and then after a year, it was very clear that we wanted to purchase a home here. Um, and, and even though that meant being in a, ha- having more expensive housing prices, um, we felt it was worth it. Um, and we, and, and that was a large part because of Underwood and because of the school system. Um, and I just wanted to kind of give you an example of just our last week of how, what that actually looks like. Um, so on, on Friday, we went trick-or-treating, and it was my first year trick-or-treating with my kids here because I was at an academic conference the previous year. And we went out and we, it was like a big block party on Honeywell Avenue. Everyone knew everyone, um, people were, people had drinks for the parents. Uh, my husband actually, we had probably a little bit too much to drink. Um, you know, it was, it was the, it was the most amazing and strangest thing I've ever witnessed on a Halloween, on a Halloween street. Um, and then on Tuesday, uh, and Tuesday, the kids had off for Election Day, and I walked with Arite actually to go vote. And on the playground, we knew it, just about all the kids there. And both of those experiences are things that are because of the nature of Underwood and because of the nature of the school. And I just can't stress enough how unique that is. I was born and raised in Minnesota. Um, I took an hour and a half bus ride to school because my parents wanted me to get, um, the best public education I could. Um, and, and I can't ex, I can't express how, how different this is. And also from New Jersey, where we lived before.
You have thirty seconds.
Um, and so, and we considered putting our kids in, I'm a big favorite, uh, I'm a big proponent of Montessori education. We considered well in, um, but ultimately decided not to after seeing my daughter's experience in first grade at Underwood, um, because we, because the community around it was so valuable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll go next in the room to Alex Slater, uh, followed by Robin Boger.
Good evening. Hi. Uh, my name is Alex Slater. I live at twenty-five Widmore Road. Uh, my son goes to Underwood, and hopefully my daughter will go to Underwood as well. I will remain optimistic about that. Um, I want to share a story about my experience moving here to Newton. I grew up in Florida in a gated community and traveled to school every day, um, through a bus or some sort of tr- formal transport. Uh, I went to private school. I got an incredible education. Um, when I moved here to Newton about five years ago, um, my wife and I had considered taking our children to private school, but um, hearing about my wife's experience in the public school system here in Massachusetts, I understood what that value could be, and it honestly transformed my perspective. Um, I'm the Creative Arts and Science rep for my son's second grade program. Um, I work really closely with Dr. Tolu Dara on that programming. I get to walk the halls of Underwood almost every week. Um, seeing the children engage with the teachers, the after-school program is phenomenal. Um, others have mentioned here the ability to walk to the school, and it is impossible to put value on what that does for community, for child's independence and growth, but also to meet friends and other parents here. Um, I understand that there are considerations for consolidation. I ask a few things of the future committee that will be represented here to really take into account the voices that you hear today and in the future. The transparency and the process that you choose to go through to make the decisions on whether or not to consolidate, I think, need to be forthright. I do ask that we really, really have more dialogue in this format and beyond. Um, I think it's incredibly important that the parents have a seat at the table. Um, I also think that, given the record of uh, how Newton residents here, especially in Newton Corner, have used their tax dollars to fund and actually help, uh, provide renovations for the other schools, it feels only fair and right that both Ward and Underwood get their shot as well. And that's all I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up in the room is Robin Boger, followed by Jeffrey Friedman.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Robin Boger. I live at two hundred Church Street Rear, and I've lived in Newton Corner for fifty years. I'm here to speak as an advocate for the village of Newton Corner, to revisit its history and restore the collective memory of what was done to our community in the name of progress and the consequences of those actions today. In my allowed three minutes, I do not have the time to trace the history of Newton Corner, the oldest village in Newton, from the first house built by Deacon John Jackson on Washington Street in sixteen thirty-nine, through the following periods marked by agriculture, the railroad era, the influx of middle-class families, and the introduction of streetcar lines. Suffice it to say that by eighteen eighty, Newton Corner had four thousand residents, which was one quarter of the population of the entire city. By that time, Newton had become a residential suburb linked to Boston by train. In nineteen fifty-six, Newton Mayor Howard J. Whitmore, in response to the newly-formed Turnpike Authority's decision to build a toll road that would cut Newton in half, declared, "There are just two things that are certain: uncertainty and confusion." That statement was followed by years of angry debate between the city and the Turnpike Authority. This ended in nineteen sixty-two, when the authority began the construction of the Mass Turnpike, thereby prioritizing regional traffic flow over local community integrity. There had not been an impact study because the authority had successfully blocked all studies. Building the pike permanently altered the physical and social fabric of Newton Corner, splitting the village in two, demolishing hundreds of homes and up to two-thirds of the businesses. It destroyed a cohesive village center, replacing it with current rotary-style interchange, known for its complicated design, heavy traffic, safety concerns, and lack of pedestrian access. Then in nineteen eighty-two, the Drucker Company razed into an antem block, a historic building that contained affordable housing and many of the remaining local businesses, replacing it with what is now One Newton Place. In twenty years, Newton Corner had been transformed from a place you wanted to get to to a place you just wanted to get through. Where are we today? Rather than having a village center that brings people together, we have a circle of death that pushes them apart. Rather than having our main street serve as village connectors, they funnel eighty thousand cars a day through our neighborhood. Rather than having stores and restaurants woven into the social and economic fabric of the community, we have a microeconomy that exists because of its proximity to the pike. Despite our loss of stores, homes, restaurants, train stations, libraries, and many buses, Newton Corner has proven to be extremely resilient. But in the interest of equity, I ask you to recognize what we have lost. Our once vibrant village center has been consigned to the slag heap of history. We have one and only one social institution, I'm finishing, that can help us transform an aggregation of strangers into a neighborhood, and that is the Underwood Elementary School. Our social fabric, so important to the emotional health of our community, is on life support. Please do not pull the plug. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in the room is Jeffrey Friedman. And then we will move back online to Emily Lindendall and Joan Rosenberg.
Hi, uh, my name is Jeff Friedman. Uh, the kids went to Ward School, and I attended both of your meetings at Bigelow. Uh, to be honest, maybe I didn't understand things so well. You explained the four choices and narrowed it down to two and said, "We have to consider all options." But to me, I didn't, I think you need to distinguish between consideration and recommendation. It's, I didn't understand that the Long Range Committee had already made their recommendation. I thought you guys were coming to tell us. We have to think of, weigh each thing. And what I took away from it was that you had a heartfelt feeling that um, neighborhood schools were the ideal. That's what you wanted. So why not go with what your heart is saying? You've said that if you check the bo, if you don't check the box, they're not gonna, they're not gonna not consider your application. So if you said in the past that mistakes have been made, ideal schools are the, the uh, neighborhood schools are the ideal, nothing's lost by not checking the box. It tells the community, "We're behind you. We're gonna fight for you." If the state of Massachusetts comes back and says, "No, you're gonna have to do something else." At least we know that you supported us like we supported all the other elementary schools that have had their, their day at getting repaired. I find it kind of amusing almost that the mayor sent out, uh, noticed they're gonna have a Jack Lemmon Day for a graduate of Ward School. Well, when you guys demolish it, what are you gonna leave? A little stone plaque that said, "Jack Lemmon Went Here"? So I would ask you to um, support us. Um, it's funny, um, something that Somerset Ma once said. "It's funny thing about life, if you refuse to accept anything but the best, very often you can get it." So we're just asking you to give Underwood and Ward a chance. Give us a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move online to Emily Lindendall, followed by Joan Rosenberg. Do you see her, Lisa? Okay. Uh, Emily, followed by Joan Rosenberg.
There we go. Does that working now?
Yep.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Emily Lindendall. I live at thirty Glendale Road. Um, sorry, I can't be there in person tonight, but I have attended the last two meetings. And I have two kids in Ward and one at Bigelow, and I've been part of the Underwood community for a year as well, so I'm familiar with both communities. I just wanted to raise, uh, two points. Um, one is what I heard in the last meeting that I attended was that you felt like you wouldn't be doing the right thing as school committee members if you didn't check the box. And what I want to bring up is that I don't feel like the school the school committee did their job in not defining what a neighborhood school is. And that is a guiding principle to what this conversation is. And I think what we're hearing from everybody is walking and community are two defining areas. And Chris, I know that you tried to move this along. I read your memo and I appreciate that, but I think that I don't think you're doing your job and moving this forward if you couldn't define what a neighborhood school is, and that's very important in this situation. The second point I want to make is, the other thing I heard, Chris, from you last time is, one of the points of consolidation is that it's, it's a way to get kids into a newer building faster, and that's true. But one point that I'm hearing a lot in these last two meetings is the emphasis on community. And we just heard from Robin, and we heard from Robin last time and others. And it's a point that I probably didn't put a lot of emphasis on myself, but I think it's a really important point that we need to consider of how the, how moving forward is going to impact the community. And so what I'm asking is that you do do your job in that we all, I think we all agree we want to move this forward. We've been in line for this for years. It's the right time to move this project forward, but I think what we don't want is the box checked. What we want is the neighborhood schools to be defined, and hopefully that will be defined by the next school committee that comes in. And I think everybody should hold that school committee accountable to define that. That's their job. And use that as a guiding principle. So I think doing the right thing now is to defer to the next school committee to make the judgment of what that is with the community's input, and then we can move that forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker online is Joan Rosenberg, followed by Susan Thompson. Okay. There we go. I think Susan Thompson.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was commuting before and I don't know how to and get my name on there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, my husband and I are Underwood Parents alums. Both of our sons went to school at Underwood, and really all of our community, all of our neighborhood, we know from Underwood. Uh, Underwood, when we, when our kids who are in their 30s now went to Underwood, we also had a neighborhood library right there. And as many of you know who've been in the neighborhood a long time, that neighborhood library was closed and is no longer there. So that was another center of the community. This community, every day, the people I see on the road, the people I recognize in my neighborhood, in the stores, that we all went to Underwood together. We all went through Underwood as parents. We all volunteered. We were all there. If we prioritize, as other neighborhoods have done in Newton, that a community school is a necessity, is a hub, is important, then that should be the guiding principle for all of the actions going forward. We have sat by here in Newton Corner, many of us, we live in an apartment. Many, there's, this isn't, this is a diverse neighborhood in terms of economics. It's still very expensive, but it is more diverse than other neighborhoods in Newton. And we have sat by while other schools have gotten beautiful, uh, have been renovated and gotten beautiful new, uh, facilities. I think that it, it, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy, as others have said, that if you don't have the school, people are gonna look for another place to live in Newton. There, if you don't have that walking ability that we had growing up with our kids, it made all of the difference in the world. And thank you to Robin for giving some history. And, um, and thank you to Cecile, the other lovely neighbors. We live on Tremont Street. It's a busy street. We lived here when they just took the railroad tracks off of it is when we moved in. And we were so excited that we were gonna have, you know, we, uh, a walking, uh, neighborhood. So thank you. Uh, thank you, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back into the room with Joyce Moss, followed by Gretchen Weisman.
Thank you. Newton advertises itself as a city of villages. That is a city with fully functioning neighborhoods where everyday life can be lived at a small community scale. It is not a trivial concept. In this age of cellphone isolation, the village's resulting web of proximate geographical connections are even more relevant today than they were 50 and 100 years ago. As you well know, we do not have a village center in Newton Corner. We have a traffic circle. The Village Grade School, which all of our children are free to attend, is the primary vehicle through which our small platoon communal life is forged. No special identity save that of a street address is needed. It is the Underwood School that allows our community to cohere in spite of the pike that tears it asunder. My family chose Newton largely because of its schools. When we were looking for a house, before we put in a bid, we checked out the Underwood School. If there had been no neighborhood school, Newton Corner would not have become our home. We have lived in the district a very long time. Our friendships with our neighbors were developed as offshoots of our children's relationships with their schoolmates. Close to 50 years later, those of us who are still alive and able are still walking to each other's homes. My family moved here in 1978, and we were the new family on the block. I was the youngest parent. Compared to my immediate neighbors, we still are the new kids on the block, and I still am. Although now at 80, I'm the youngest grandparent. But folks in their mid-80s are going to be moving to one place or another, whether they like it or not. Many of these homes with no children will be in the not-too-distant future on the market, and new families with children will fill them. And I also urge you not to forget that upzoning is in the air in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Declining enrollments now do not necessarily mean declining enrollments in five or 10 years. As an example, when my young son was soon to attend middle school, the school committee decided to close Bigelow. My son had to go to Day Junior High School. But the data upon which the school committee relied and which predicted declining enrollments was faulty. It turned out that many families with women's liberation mothers, barely a decade or so younger than I, had delayed their childhood rearing year, child-rearing years
You have 30 seconds.
for the purpose of pursuing the extra training that their new accessible careers demanded. This novel fact of life was not accounted for, and eventually an enrollment boomlet occurred. Luckily, the school did not send me a buil-, uh, building, did not sell the building, and the Bigelow School has been back in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Gretchen Weisman, followed by Ken Zan.
Hi, uh, my name is Gretchen Wiseman, and I live at 8 Eldridge Street. So I am a past parent at Underwood, a past PTO member at Underwood, and also a parent of a now Bigelow student, and I am also right across from the school. So I, uh, look, can basically look into the Underwood windows. I could send my kid there, although he was always late. I could get him there in about 30 seconds. I was the one on the porch yelling, "Run, run!" And, um, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I'm echoing a lot of what I've heard. I haven't actually been in these meetings. The last two I missed, but I was in the meetings in 2023. And I do, I do find that the story seems to shift. And I just want to echo, uh, a call for transparency. I, you know, I, I'm not quite sure why, why the urgency. I mean, the school is 100 years old. I, I don't think, you know, it's been 100 years old. When, when these, uh, the process for redoing schools started, you know, 20 years ago or so, I might have that a bit wrong. Uh, Underwood was still the oldest school at that time, and it wasn't urgent at that moment to fix it. And I, I think it's probably in very similar shape. That's one thing. I also looked at the Venn diagrams of where schools were, trying to understand why actually Ward and Underwood, um, were being connected. And I feel like you could draw those circles in any which direction. I mean, most, all of the elementary schools are pretty close to one another. And, um, I mean, Oak Hill and Brown are about 300 feet away from each other, so I'm not sure that that's exactly a reason for, for this, uh, combining the two schools and the work that needs to happen. Let's see. I, I guess I would also say, I am, as a neighbor, as someone that sees the school and the neighborhood, you know, day in and day out, there are kids there morning, noon, and night. They are in the park, they are, um, in the after-school, they are mixing with the preschools. There's feeder preschools on both sides. So those kids can, you know, my, my son went to school from like age three, and he's now, you know, 12, he's been nine years already with the same kids. So they're coming there. There's the families that are going to church there. There's the families that are, um, in the park. There's the, you know, uh, assisted living, uh, individuals that are coming and hanging out in the park and getting to mix with the, uh, with the kids. And, you know, there's just this vibrant community in Farlow Park, the, the, the middle of the, um, it was cement when I moved there 10 years ago, and now it's been filled in. It's, you know, been restored. So there's a, like a pond in the middle of the park. It's beautiful. There's a new playground. It's been really incredible for, for everyone. It keeps the neighborhood safe. It keeps a lot of people around. It keeps people interacting with each other. It keeps, the kids go to local businesses. There are several that, uh, CNN is probably uh, alive because of, it's a pizza place. It's alive because of those kids. They go there every single day and eat tons and tons of pizza. But they also go to all the other stores. They go across the circle of death. And, uh, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, next in the room is Ken Zan, um, and then we'll go back online to Shannon Abram.
Hello, thank you for hearing from us today. Um, I'd like to speak to you as an alum of Ward School. I attended Ward approximately 20 to 15 years ago, within that frame, timeframe. And I can truly say that it was one of the most memorable periods of my life due to its nature as a neighborhood school. One of my earliest memories is when I was in second grade and I walked to school on my own, and my teacher was very efficiently let my parents know that I probably was not supposed to be doing that, uh, at that age quite yet. But it was so close to my home, and I knew the streets and the roads and the families and the homes so familiarly at that age that it felt safe. And, and everything was connected together in a way that I haven't seen in many other neighborhoods. I currently work in a different public school district, uh, one in which many of the students get there, arrive in the morning on buses and in their family's cars, and there is a very limited number of children that are walking to school due to sidewalks and proximity. And I see that difference in the way that they are connected to their classmates. It has been a very long time since I was in elementary school, and yet I can tell you the first and last name of every single child that was in my class, and I could point to, I could point out where they live, um, simply walking along the roads. I will go on a walk sometimes, um, still living in the same house that I grew up in and in the same neighborhood. And I look around and I see many memories. And I see homes of friends that have maybe moved on, maybe still live there. And it truly brings a community together and it creates a sense of belonging to have that neighborhood school as an institution for the community within a smaller radius than is necessarily provided in other neighborhoods and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move online to Shannon Abram, followed by Stephen Elliott.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, um, I didn't know that Jack Lemmon went to Ward. I think that's amazing. Matt Damon went to Underwood. It's not a competition. We're just like a collection of amazing people. Um, I grew up in New Hampshire. I, we didn't have sidewalks. We didn't have streetlights. I didn't have any friends. My kids started at Underwood in 2021, and this like magical world opened up. I genuinely thought that like neighborhoods like this, oh, I live, uh, on Oakley Road. My kids go to Underwood. I thought neighborhoods were like something like TGI, TGI Friday, like TV made up. Like, I didn't think it was a real thing. And I'd never experienced anything like what happens here before. We walk to school like everybody else, and our crossing guard knows everybody's name, and she gives us all Lunar New Year gifts, and my kids are like psyched for Lunar New Year. My kids know the names of all the elderly gardeners and everybody's dog's name. And the guy at CNN will let my kid buy pizza, even if he's a little short, because he knows we're good for it. And like, we are lucky enough, so I don't know what it's like at Ward. I imagine it's also magical. I imagine all the villages are magical. I only know mine. I live in the world that Sesame Street told me was real in 1984, but I didn't think it was a real thing, but it is. It's a real thing, and that's where we live. And all the people that came before us here created this. I don't want you to check a box. I want you to fight to protect the like rare and special amazing thing Newton has that most places don't have, and that a lot of people think is imaginary. My kids are getting to live this fairy tale childhood. And we have that in Newton, a, and I just, I want to fight for the thing that makes us special, not check a box so we can be like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, uh, go to Stephen Elliott online, and then come back into, to the room with Jean Quinn.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Um, a quick anecdote and my main point, uh, we moved in here.
Lisa, is there, okay, why don't we come back into the room and, uh, that was Stephen Elliott. If you want to log back on, um, you can certainly make a, oh. He's back? Okay.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm not sure, my little anecdote, uh, uh, began or not, but, um,
We did not, you start.
The anecdote is this, I walked with my son to the corner of, uh, Vernon and Park when he was five years old, back in 1997, when we bought our house here on Tremont Street. And I said, "Jackson, this is where you'll be going to school, the Underwood School. Look at that playground, look at that school, and look over your shoulder to the left. There's the Bigelow. That's where you'll be going after you get out of the Underwood School. We're in the neighborhood now." And he looked at me, uh, with horror in his eyes and said, "Dad, when do I get to ride a school bus?" So we got over that. My main point is, is that it sits on a nice piece of land, the Underwood School. Now, I'm a liberal arts guy, and I'm kind of a, all you need is a tree and Socrates to teach kids. You don't need these multi-multi-multi-million, uh, dollar schools that are being built every place. But if that were to be the case, there is room there, the side of the former library, a park next to the playground, all of this could be arranged in order to maintain. the neighborhood feel and to bring in the people from the other side of the Mass Pike. There's Newton on the other side for a few blocks too. And these are people living in apartments, entry level places into Newton, which I think are very important to maintain. That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's go into the room with Jean Quinn and Amy Davis. And there's someone online who is just JMMO. If, to follow, if that person could put in their name, that would be appreciated.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for hosting the meeting. And I'm Jen Chin, who lives on 15th Street Road. I'm the parents of three and two of my kids went to Ward School. One of them is Ken, who just spoke. So I'd like to share my experience of how important we have a neighborhood school. When my kids were younger, I studied, Ken and my son, they went to Ward since they went to the kindergarten. So I started walking them since we only like kind of two, two, three blocks away from the school. And as Ken said, after a while, I just let her walk by herself. And the teacher like, the teacher like let her pass the information and also called me said, um, she's, she was too young to walk at that time, but later she walked by herself. So I know Ward is one of the smallest elementary school in Newton. But because it's small and so we have really tied the community. Like when we walk the kids, you saw the other parents walk with their children. And the children started building relationship with each other and the same for the parents. And the parents just like started chatting in front of the school, in the playground. So not only for the children build up a relationship and the friendship and the same for the parents. So that, I feel that's kind of made the community friendlier and tighter group then. And even, I think after many years, they graduated from Ward. Ken once shared a story with me, like she walked to Newton Center and right after passed a block, then she received a message from her elementary school friend that said, oh, I saw you because she just passed the, their house. So it's such a nice, really friend environment for the kids and also for the families. And also, as Donna mentioned, we have really wonderful after school program. Many of their friends went to the after school together. And the, from Donna's speech, that just reminded me such a wonderful memory of the after school program.
You have 30 seconds.
The kids went to a lot of field trips. They had a yearly musical. They had a performance. They had arts and crafts, like all the Ward School and the after school program build a such wonderful neighborhood, the school for the families in this area. So I think when the kids grow up, they not only learn, learn the knowledge and science or math and English in the school, but also they build up their whole person, what kind of person they will become when they grow up. I think that's how important the Ward and Ward After School Program gave me a wonderful experience for the neighborhood and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Davis in the room and then, and then online to Julia Ong.
Hi, Amy Davis, 322 Franklin Street. I have a sixth grader at Bigelow and a fourth grader at Underwood, who's back there. And she, yes, and does walk to school independently many days. I'm a former PTO president. I'm a six-year board member at Underwood. And frankly, I'm just exhausted from talking about this issue. Underwood has done everything that the city has asked of us. In 2019, the prior superintendent stood in front of us and said, your enrollment's too small. Your enrollment's dropping. You will never get a new school at this size. Despite COVID, despite your trends across the city, Underwood has built its enrollment back up and is projected to be larger than the currently being constructed Franklin in 2029 at 276 students versus 274 at Franklin. Yet we're being considered for consolidation. Underwood has the second highest percentage of high need students and the second highest percentage of low income students of all the elementary schools in Newton. Yet our MCAS scores are in the top half of schools. Something in the special sauce of Underwood's size, teachers and community is working for our students and is working for, for this demographic of students in our 100-year-old building. Yet we're being considered for consolidation. Separately, Ward has the lowest percentage of high need students across all elementary schools and the second lowest percentage of low income students. While I have many dear friends at Ward, these schools are not a demographic or cultural match. And yet we're being considered for consolidation. I think you're really underestimating the stress and the toll this is taking on both communities for years of living in uncertainty and feeling like we always need to be on the defensive. Like, okay, this is going to be years away, but there's been other decisions made like this, like splitting cabin up to go to half to Bigelow that was made in pretty quick order. And we don't want to be blindsided. So we've been completely ready for a fight for six years, literally. And anecdotally, we just keep hearing, oh, Underwood's site's too small. This is all going to end with a combined school. It's going to be at Ward. You may, you started this meeting by saying that's not the case. But like, that's not the rumor and the conspiracy theory and the scuttlebutt in the city. And you have to understand that. And checking the box is just one more signal that there's some secret master plan, even though you insist that is not the case. I just echo everyone who said tonight, please keep this dialogue open. These community meetings have been great. And we, we just need you to truly consider every option and think creatively. I liked what Christie said about Borough Park. There's a lot of creative options to keep these, both of these school communities happy. And just don't take the path of least resistance while telling us that that's not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go online to Julia Ong, followed by Steve Robbins.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julia Ong. I'm a Ward parent. I live on Irving Street. And I just echo everything that everybody has said in terms of the community that the neighborhood schools provide. We're fairly new to Newton. And I will say, prior to our child starting at Ward, I felt like we didn't really know this community. And then since starting, have really already feel like I'm part of this vibrant big community as everyone has already mentioned. And shout out definitely to Donna and the aftercare program. It is phenomenal. I think I just want to echo, so I've been attending the two prior meetings that you guys had had too. And there was a person, I don't recall, who said this, that the schools aren't broken. Neither schools are broken. And I think we've heard that from everybody who's spoken tonight. But they are instead thriving, thriving schools for each of these neighborhood communities. And the enrollment has been the main reason why consolidation is even here on the table. But as someone just previously said to tonight, build it and they will come. Have faith that the enrollment will go up. And I know that there's been surveys and studies and such on enrollment trends. Though, again, query, there's so much more building that is about to take place here in Newton. There could be more people coming. And I know that Dr. Nolan, again, it was noted at the previous meeting that you've done some informal surveys of folks who are in private schools and why they're not coming to Ward or the public schools. And I think, Chris, you said the number one reason was religious. But I don't think Dr. Nolan asked the question of if the schools were in better condition, if, you know, would you come back? I don't think that was asked. Apologies if I'm wrong on that. I guess for me, one of the biggest things is, and I don't know if it's just the nature of these meetings, but I have not heard a single person speak in favor of consolidation. And I just want to know what impact that has on you guys as a school committee, listening to that, that nobody in this community has come forth and said, yes, please check the box for consolidation. And I echo what I think most people have said in both meetings and tonight, that there is a lack of trust and the transparency issue. And if you guys check that box, it sounds like it will be even more of a divide in terms of the community feeling like we have the support from you guys who are supposed to represent us as constituents. So I am just asking like most everybody else that you've heard from, please do not check the box. Please continue to keep this dialogue open. And checking that box, I do not think is a harmless action, as has been said in previous meetings. Thank you for this opportunity. Appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you. Remaining online, we'll have Steve Robbins, followed by Jerry Robbins.
Can you see me okay? Can you hear me? Looks like it. Hi, my name is Steve Robbins. I live at 61 Prentice Road. We have two kids that graduated from Ward, including the after school program, followed by Bigelow and Newton North. And thank you, Donna, for running a world-class after school program that was really foundational to our kids' experience at Ward. Both of our kids walked to Ward on many days. And on those walks and while we were waiting to get our kids from, you know, from school with our kids playing on the playground, it really did build a strong sense of community. And, you know, those were the same people that we saw performances and parent nights and whatnot. And it, it really does make a difference. And I have to say that our kids started at Ward nearly 30 years ago in 1997. And even then, I was, I was kind of, I just don't have another word for it. I was appalled at the condition of the school. It was, it was not good. And there were times when my kids were there when the basement flooded. And I think they couldn't run after school and there were classes in the basement. I mean, it, that had to not, had to be relocated. So the condition has been pretty bad for 30 years. And we've watched as all of these other schools have been, have been, you know, renovated and closed and, you know, rebuilt from the ground up. And I kind of feel like we've been super patient. And we've waited and waited and waited. We were told that, you know, this would be one of the next projects coming up and nothing happened. And I would really like to say that as taxpayers that have funded all of these other schools, I think I would really like to see us fund community schools for Ward and Underwood. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Let's go to Jerry Robbins online.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Thank you for hosting this important community meeting. I'd just like to try to say something that hasn't been echoed before. And that's the generational impact of the different schools. We heard from some alumni. I am a Newton South graduate. And we chose to live in this community in the Ward School area in part because of the proximity to be able to walk to a neighborhood school. As my husband said, the opportunity for creating community was a really integral part of our decision to live where we live and we still live here. We are now in the position where once we moved in 28 years ago, we had little kids and other people had older children. And now we are the elders on the street, so to speak. And we're watching younger people move in. And it's such a joy to see kids in strollers and kids walking to school every day. Our next door neighbors are also, he's a Ward alum, a little older than our oldest, and he's now got a child at Ward and one to come. So people come back here. And I think it's really important to continue to provide schools in a town this size that are able to be walkable. And the, I think in some ways, the demographics follows the politics. And we've, I've been here long enough to see Memorial closed and become Memorial Spalding. And the Hyde School closed and everyone's at Countryside. And then Countryside was exploding at the seams. And Bigelow was closed and reopened. And one of the other middle schools that I'm blinking on, not weeks, the one down by Newton Wellsley was closed. And so there were districting problems around the middle schools. Let's not make a decision now that's going to come back to haunt us in years to come. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Nope. Okay. I believe we just have one speaker left in the room, which is Bob Alchel.
Good evening. My name is Bob Alchler. I live at 95 Montrose Street in the Ward School neighborhood. I have a fourth grader at Ward School, son who's a seventh grader at Day. I'm a Ward alum myself. To start, thank you to all of you for being here for these meetings. It's been a lot of hours. Thank you to Mayor-elect Mark Moredo and to several newly elected school committee candidates who are here. I think that it has been phenomenal to hear so many community members speak about what they love about our communities and about these schools. I think it's actually a little bit concerning that we don't have the entire school committee here, that these communities have not had the opportunity to address all of you at once. And even if Mayor Fuller and the other school committee members who are absent have great reasons for that, it would be concerning that you might choose how to proceed without the communities having had a chance to address everyone, without all of you, all of them, having been able to hear from everybody in person. We've heard a lot of excuses for why it's necessary to consider consolidating these schools. We've been told that it's because they're next to each other and that they're old. But all of these excuses, we can easily dismiss them as exactly that. When, what we've heard from the last couple of meetings is that even when Anger Zervis and Cabot or Lincoln Elliott and Horace Mann and Franklin, which are all three schools that are in adjacent districts to each other, when the planning has been getting done for building those schools, there was never even a thought about maybe we should consider consolidating them. There wasn't even a thought that even if it's a terrible idea, we've got to keep our options open. We've got to be open-minded. We need to think about whether it could make sense to have a 700-person school for eight or 900 students. And as many people have mentioned, these communities, we have through all those years, we've paid our property taxes, we've voted for the overrides, we've waited our turn. And what we hear now is that somehow we are treated differently. Whether it was 2020 when David Fleishman came right out and said, we're going to combine these schools, whether it was 2023 when there was that phony task force set up to discuss the future of the schools when it was really about closing them down. It's over and over again, it's just a charade. And even now, even the, the reason that we hear that says, oh, well, we might need voters to be able to convince them to pass an override. We might, we might need to discuss this. But that's not a reason to discuss it. It's a reason to set the record straight. It's a reason to actually tell everybody the truth that has been covered up by misinformation for the last five years. So that there can be an honest, transparent discussion about this that leads to a good outcome for both communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we have one more, one more person online who just raised their hand. Andy?
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me, school committee?
Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Andy Gluck. I live at 19 Merton Street in Newton Corner. And I was a teacher at Underwood for 18 years, a parent for 10. So I spent 28 consecutive Septembers going into that building. And I've lived in Newton for 35 years. I feel very honored to be sort of in the last or maybe second to last position of this evening because I'd like to acknowledge a couple of things and then just make one simple point. What I'd like to acknowledge is that your job as a school committee and as Mark coming in as our new mayor is incredibly hard. And even though you've heard a lot of strong opinions tonight from very smart people here in Newton, we, I think for the most part, recognize that your job is hard. And so what I'd like to acknowledge is that we're trying to help you do the best that you can in a very difficult situation. do the best that you can in a very difficult situation. The other thing I'd like to acknowledge is that change is hard. Most people don't like it. It's scary, it's unknown, it's uncertain, but sometimes it's necessary. And then the last thing I'd like to acknowledge, because this is going to surprise some people, I can guarantee you, is that I do believe that there are fiscal constraints to building two brand-new schools on these existing sites. Even though I adore Underwood, I gave my life to Underwood, I love my neighbors, my kids went there, I would love to see it rebuilt, and I'd love to have Ward have that same opportunity. But it may be the case that we do have to, for fiscal constraints, consolidate the two schools, and I'm open to that. And I have spoken a lot with Christie Gibson, and I've shared with Dr. Nolan and with Josh Morse, our building commissioner, the idea of potentially building a new joint school on the western edge of Burr Park. It could be the compromise that makes everybody a little unhappy and therefore is a decent compromise. But the last point I'd like to make, and again, thank you so much for your time and effort and concern and care, for our kids, as a teacher, it is hard to teach in a building that has leaky roofs and no heat and no air conditioning and no elevator and no chance for a custodian to get recycling down the stairwell. All these things are important, so I thank you for realizing that we do need good school buildings for great teaching and for great learning. So the last thing I'll say is I'll just summarize what everybody's already said to you. I think you'll gain tremendous credibility among your constituents and those who you represent. And it's not a big ask, but just don't check the box. It's okay. We're going to work with you, we're going to consider options that are outside of what could be what everybody wants, but you'll make a lot of people happy and gain a tremendous amount of credibility if you leave the box open for now, and let's get in line, and let's get some new schools for Newton, but let's preserve our neighborhood feel and get everybody's input, and I think you'll be much better for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Looks like there is one more person who has raised their hand, or two more people. Laura Goldworm and Jennifer Shin.
Can you all see and hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I don't have much to add that hasn't already been said about the importance of our community's schools. So I just really wanted to get on the record to underscore that piece of it and how important it is to our community, and it's really the only thing that we have left. But I really want to add on to what Andy was saying about the need for Newton Public Schools to rebuild credibility and transparency with our specific communities. We have felt like we have been in an existential fight for our kids for well over six years specifically related to this. And we have not felt heard, we have not felt listened to. And I agree that checking the box would just be another piece of evidence that that is in fact the case. And I urge you, urge you all to slow this process down, to not check the box, to truly involve the parents and the clients of these schools in this conversation. We are owed it. We elect you all. You are there to represent us. And while there are very real fiscal constraints and other things, not a single person in this room who weighed in tonight has advocated for moving this forward quickly or checking the box. So please, please listen to us, and please value our community schools.
Thank you. Next person is Jen Shin.
Oh, that was, that was you?
No, the...
Someone, it's someone online.
Someone online.
Yep. Yep, she's disappeared.
Okay. She's back?
Actually surprisingly hard to manage. Makes us appreciate Steve.
Okay, we can see you, Ms. Shin. Oh, but we can't hear you. Unmute, please.
Hold on.
We need you to unmute.
Ms. Shin, you have to respond to our request to unmute you, if you can push the button. I don't know how to help right now. She seems frozen.
Yeah, that's a little... Okay, seeing that we're not apparently able to resolve this, if you could send a written statement to the school committee that will become part of the public record for the evening, that might be our best, our best shot at resolving this.
Frozen.
Oh, she's frozen.
She's back.
Okay, we'll give it one more shot here.
I am so sorry.
Hey, we got you now.
Oh my God, you wouldn't believe I do this for a living also, so I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to get my video working, but apparently I'm not able to. Okay.
All right.
Oh, well, so I'm sorry. My name's Jen Shin. I live at 207 Franklin Street, and I have twins at Underwood in fourth grade, and they also attend Underwood After School. I actually had a long speech written for this meeting that I've been preparing for, for a couple of weeks, but I'll keep you short, because I don't need to repeat everything else, what everything else has said about the value of the walkable neighborhood schools. But I just wanted to add that I'm, as a solo mom of two kids, Underwood community is my, my village, that'd be my village, and it's truly our extended family. I rely on them, I depend on them, they are always there, they are... Underwood is just, it's more than a school. So by the time any real change happens, my kids will probably be in college, but I'm here fighting, and I will continue to fight to keep Underwood. I don't think we would have been able to get this kind of a community support if we were in a bigger school. So I just beg you to please fight for our neighborless schools. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that concludes all of our public comments for this evening. I thank everyone for coming, all the engagement we've had, both tonight and over the last two weeks at the community meetings in, at, at Bigelow. I, I do want to just point out, Mayor Fuller is at Mayor Warren's wake this evening, which is why she's not attending. So there will be two open meetings of the school committee coming up, where this item will be on the agenda. So you will have incremental opportunity to present public comment, or obviously you can reach out to any of the members of the school committee directly between now and then. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.